We'll now move on to discussion items.
Discussion item number one, Frankfurt Plant Board.
With the Frankfurt Plant Board, please approach. Welcome back.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Kathy Lindsey.
I'm kidding.
That's L-I-N-D-S-E-Y. With a C, Kathy. I'm with the Frankfurt Plant Board. And first of all, I want to thank you all for having us here tonight. I know that you all have already passed a resolution, but we just wanted to be able to be here tonight to kind of present today from our side of your municipal-owned utility. This gives us an opportunity to share the facts about how proposed legislation would affect our community, and I think that's important for, you know, not just you guys to hear, but for the community to hear. And a lot of people watch these meetings, and we just want to keep everybody in the know on what's going on, so thank you, guys. Our general manager, Gary Zing, sends his regrets, but unfortunately is sick tonight, like a lot of us, so we didn't want him to come for that. So on behalf of all the Frankfurt Plant Board staff, I would like to say thank you to Mayor Wilkerson and to each city commissioner for your support, and I mean that from the heart. It means so much. It means a lot to all of the employees of FPB to see the unified support for the company where many have built their careers right here in Frankfurt. So with that support and adding the support of the fiscal court, there is unanimous opposition by our local elected government to oppose Senator Williams' plan. And that's something that we really appreciate from you guys. We realize that the public discussions by those advocating for the proposed changes in legislation has ignited feedback, and this is likely to continue throughout the session which has just started. We intend to defend your municipal utility and the services it provides from this unnecessary and potentially harmful legislation on behalf of our customers, our employees, and for the sake of the soundness of the utility and the services we provide to this community. I hope my words tonight will answer some questions that have arisen as a result of the discussion, and then I will invite Stephanie Stumbo to specifically address impacts of and statements made in regards to the proposed legislation. Your municipal utility provides electric services to 22,287 households or businesses, water services to 16,780 residents and businesses, and serves 17,926 unique telecom customers. The telecom department is thriving, currently serving a majority of the eligible customers in our service area while competing with seven other telecom providers. In addition, local cable provides community information and services that your constituents value. We are your utility, and as such have demonstrated a commitment to this community by an annual investment of approximately 1.2 million of in-kind services to the City of Frankfurt, the Franklin County Fiscal Court, and the city-county school systems. As a nonprofit, the in-kind services provided annually to this city are approximately $800,000 in the form of sewer billing, free cable advertising, network infrastructure, workforce labor, and equipment use for various community projects. The in-kind services provided to the fiscal court and the city and county school boards annually are valued at approximately $400,000 in the form of network infrastructure and community event coverage. As you are aware, since December 2015, FPB has paid a fee for the use of city facilities to the City of Frankfurt that started at $109,000 per year, increasing 10% after each five-year period, totaling $119,900 in the current fiscal year. The statutes FPB operates under today make optional payments in lieu of taxes, pilot, to each school district and municipality in which its property is located. Not making such payments keeps more money in the pockets of the customer ratepayers, who ultimately, if remitted, would bear the burden of paying this tax. FPB's customer owners already pay a school tax of 3% on most electric, water, and telecommunications services that is billed by the Plant Board and remitted to the state. FPB provides a breakdown of the tax collected by school district, which the state uses to send back to the schools. FPB's customer owners pay approximately $2.4 million in school tax annually, so any additional pilot payments or backdoor taxes this proposed legislation would impose would be in addition to the taxes already paid by our customer owners. This proposal usurps local control. It's very important, not just to Frankfurt and Franklin County, but to all local municipalities, municipal utilities, and others, as it is counter to maintaining and protecting that local control, local input by the community residents, and local decision-making authority. In fact, those most impacted by the proposed legislation is our utility customers, our owners. And that's both residential and local businesses. They are the ratepayers, and they are the owners. This is their money. The discussion of this legislation already has possible impact specific to the stability of the utility as it relates to pending competitive bids by the utility that would benefit our customers, the retention of local jobs and our employees, and even efforts to our PPAs and securing future electric generation opportunities for power. It plants uncertainty and questions. This is not only negative for your utility, but for our whole community. Your local community was created and even exists because this body stepped up and ensured our community, both residential and local businesses, had critical services when private for-profits did not come in to provide those services. Your utility puts our customers first, as they are the owners of this public utility. Our employees are local. We have a vested interest in the success of this community. We believe in the principles on which the Frankfurt Plant Board was established, and that's to ensure critical services are provided within the community and to give the community, entire community, a voice and a say on how its utility is run. It has worked effectively since our establishment 80 years ago. Making any change now is short-sighted. I think Dick Silver said it best in his letter to the State Journal editor last week, when he said, "It's like saying, 'I will sell my car, use that money for cool stuff, and then ride my bike to work every day." It's not practical. In order to prosper, our community needs the backbone of essential local services that Frankfurt Plant Board provides. As the mayor has said many times, the City of Frankfurt is in an enviable position to own these services, electric, water, and telecom. So let's do what we can to ensure that we can continue in this position. Again, I want to thank you guys so much for your support during all of this, everything that you have shown, speaking out, the resolution. It has meant so much to our employees, and we really appreciate it. At this point, I want to introduce our team member, who is helping out tonight in Gary's absence. Stephanie Stumbo has 30 years of both executive and legislative experience here in Frankfurt. She has served as a team member of a law firm whose focus and expertise on regulated electric, has focused on regulated electric utilities, and she served as the former of the Director of the Kentucky PSC. So I'd like to welcome Stephanie Stumbo. She's going to speak directly about the legislation. Thank you, guys, really, for listening.
Thanks, guys. I know this is a topic you wish we could move past, as do we. I will be as brief as humanly possible, but given the comments over a series of a couple of meetings, there are some items we need to address. Again, I'm Stephanie Stumbo. Really appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and want to echo on behalf of all of the Frankfurt Plant Board our sincere appreciation for your all's support and getting out front on this issue with us. It means a great deal, and we hope those watching understand how valuable having that support is, and again, our appreciation to you. To start, we, the Frankfurt Plant Board, has the utmost respect for our elected officials. But this issue should not be about politics. It should be about what is sound policy. What is the best policy? What is the best public policy for our ratepayers and our residents? While meaningful discussion is valuable, this topic specifically has previously been presented to you in a very favorable light that seeks to take you down a path, and the question isn't, "Do we go down that path?", but "Should we?" And the clear answer to that is a resounding no. You should not. The current statutes already gets the job done. In fact, the current statutes currently allow local control over your utility by action of this elected body. It allows local control in decision-making, and assuring that decision-making is responsive to what's best for this community and your citizens. The changes would, in fact, place that decision-making, at least on some buckets or lines of service of the Plant Board, in the hands of out-of-state corporations and not here locally. You've heard the old saying, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." That's very applicable here. Again, this allows, if you have a desire to make changes to your municipal utility, if that is a future sale at some point, that statutory authority already resides with this body. You already have that control and that say. And the current statutory framework assures the residents of this community and our ratepayers have a say in that process as well. We agree with you that this is Frankfurt and our utility today, but as Kathy alluded, it's others tomorrow. This legislation sets a dangerous precedent that while it's targeting the Frankfurt Plant Board, it kind of sets a peg in statute for other areas, other rural communities across the state. So it won't be just us. It'll be everyone that has a rural utility, a rural municipal utility, or who are serviced by municipalities. Half a million Kentuckians, half a million Kentuckians, are currently served by local municipalities, and we just can't risk their future. As you well know, and I think, not to duplicate, I'm going quick as I can, Mayor, but Kathy has alluded, you've said before, it is an asset, both to the community and for economic recruitment and development, to own, not only your own utility, but a say in how those services are offered, where they're located. That is an asset for the community to have. In one of the recent presentations proponents made on this, they touted that recently another city had disposed or had voted to sell its broadband as well. What you weren't told is that that exact same time in the east, if my accent doesn't give it away, I'm hillbilly. In the, proud one, in the east, Pike County has taken action after decades of issue with a for-profit provider to do what you are doing. They're going to lay fiber, and they are going to do municipal broadband service. So you were told one side, but not told each. One side spits out, doesn't work for everybody, right? So each community should decide what's in the best interest of their ratepayers, your constituents, your neighbors, your families, you yourself, your air customers. The provisions in this legislation are absolutely not needed. I cannot convey clearly enough that the authority to make changes as needed with your Plant Board, with your municipal electric utility, and any services they provide already statutorily rests with this body. In fact, it was alluded in some of the previous presentations kind of questioning that we offer broadband. Well, the municipal utility that you have was fully enacted and created by this body, albeit 80 years ago, this body at that time, in full compliance with law, when they decided to add to their portfolio to offer cable, back when in the valleys, we couldn't get good service here, and you guys stepped up, meaning the council before you, and decided that would be another service offered. That, too, was done by an action of this body via ordinance to add that service. Same is true when they made the decision and took action in accordance to law and the authority afforded to you to add broadband. It's additionally important to remind you that your utility, despite comments, has complied with all existing laws and requirements, even when the term "special-purpose government entity", as specified in KRS 65A, was thrown out. Your Plant Board already fully complies with all legal and statutory requirements for those entities in terms of audits, reporting, registration, fee payments. Again, this law, this legislation, in this version or any future version, is not necessary nor needed. We already assure transparency, reporting requirements, and audits. And more importantly, your utility has received the highest audit findings from an independent external auditor. Not the same one every year, a different one. Your utility means a high A-bond rating. What does that tell us in your ratepayers, your constituents, this community? It reflects on the sound fiscal management of your nonprofit utility. There's nothing inappropriate, nothing that's occurring that's not in accordance with existing law. Your utility provides your consumers, your customers, both residential, commercial, even you and your own families, affordable, reliable, and competitive services. These are our family, our friends, our neighbors. It is not driven by profit or beholden to shareholders. It puts people first. Again, to ask Kathy's point, why it even got in the business of providing utilities to begin with? When for-profits weren't stepping up, it wasn't cost-effective to come and offer that service, this body, at some point in the past, made those executive decisions to assure that you all had necessary services. This utility continues to strive to make improvements, to expand its service territory, to get services to every last person, that last mile home. It maintains its assets, and as it has for 80 years, it stands ready for when disruptions may, and as we know, do occur. What's important is, as customers, me and each of you included, we all want the best, the fastest, and no disruption, right? Needs to be flawless. That is normal, and that is said truthfully of any customer, of any service, any utility provider. Your municipal utility and its board is also created by this governing body. Mayor makes those appointments, this entity confirms those. But they aren't out-of-state folks. They live here, they work here. The dollars they pay turn over in your economy, as does all those employees. Additionally, they care about this utility, not just because it's their employer, because guess what? They're their own customer, because they live here locally. What this proposal will do is, as Kathy says, it usurps local control. And this is a definite threat, not just to the City of Frankfurt and the Frankfurt Plant Board, but to all municipal utilities and rural communities who depend on municipal services. It sets a bad policy precedent. Again, not just for Frankfurt. We might be the first on the chopping block, but if it were to pass, we would not be the last. It would be the next person who saw the opportunity. It mandates, regardless of revenues and regardless of actual real surplus of funds, that payments in lieu of taxes be made. What that does is that jeopardizes and places at risk your utility's ability to target necessary revenues for improvements, for expansions, for assuring that they have the costs on hand and reserves required for their bond rating, and to cover unanticipated events and expenses as they occur. Further, this bill, as drafted in its current form, further limits the utility's legal authority, and that will impede their ability to act when needed quickly in the best interest of their customers. It places local jobs at risks. The Plant Board is one of your larger employers. If you move out school systems and state government, they're in the top four top employers in your community, employing close to 200 individuals. And again, every dollar paid for those local direct jobs turn over more than once in this local economy. It has the appearance, as drafted, to give you all two choices. It really doesn't give you two choices. The two choices are, you can either take it from the Plant Board, meaning your broadband services, and absorb that under the direct guidance and operation of the city, or sell. In essence, it's going to force the sale of your broadband services to a for-profit entity. So what is it really about? It's about a one-time payment, right? To do something else with it. And for any for-profit utility that would be interested in that purchase, it's not about competitiveness, or keeping rates low, or getting your customers or your constituents best services. It's about gaining that market control, getting that population of market access. If you cherry pick or allow, in any form of legislation, the cherry picking of one lane of services offered by the utility, it is going to have an effect on the remaining services of that utility. It also is going to increase costs and increase rates on your constituents. It does not offer you a promise of better in the future. It's nothing more than a promise. A for-profit entity will make investments. They will bring you the next shiniest new toy, as promised, only if it makes economic sense for their bottom line and their shareholders. Versus a nonprofit utility who is committed to assure the community has services and works every day to improve and advance all of their lines of service, whether it's electric, water, cable, or broadband. So it's important, not just that you came out early and you set the peg to say, "We want local control, and we support our utility," but it also sends a message to your peers across the state of how important standing against this type of legislation in its current draft form or any future form is. Again, it's a promise of something, it is not a guarantee. You control your utility and services. That gives you an inherent power. Maintaining those assets that generate revenue and the services for your citizens, these aren't luxuries. Broadband, water, and electric, those are critical utilities. Those are needs, not in the luxury category. For all the aforementioned reasons, one, we personally thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you. Each one of the council members, Thompson, all of you, that Monroe, I could sit here and read off every nameplate, that has signed on and said, "We're going to stand with the Frankfurt Plant Board." We sincerely thank each and every one of you, each of you, very much for your support and your public comments. We look forward to working with you as this legislation in some form is likely to be filed in advance. But for all of the aforementioned reasons that I have hit on, and that's not even all the things that have been said to you, but for being judicious with your time and sparing you, we've tried to tighten it up to the most critical that shows the impact on the ratepayers, your constituents, and your community. We appreciate your support. In any form this legislation comes, we ask that you to continue to vote no and encourage others not to support this legislation. We look forward to working with you on this and other exciting issues related to utility services with your utility in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Can I, Ms. Stumbo? Mind if I ask you a couple of questions? The other community that was mentioned a couple of times was Bardstown, I think. And they essentially made their council, which voted to start the process, basically stated that the infrastructure upgrades and the cost of upgrading the television and internet services would outweigh the eventual cost to the individuals for all of their rates, which would include water and electric and everything else, I assume, you know. Even though each thing is supposed to be self-sufficient, there are, you know, there are shared costs, if you will, when it comes to overhead and administration. Knowing that Bardstown is smaller than Franklin County, is the Plant Board, and I know the answer to this because I know David Denton very well, and I can see Mr. Hubin already nodding his head, is the Plant Board secure in the idea that our rates are going to stay competitive or better than the surrounding counties? Because that's essentially what I'm getting from Bardstown is that they felt pressured that they needed that one-time check to be able to, and to cut the ongoing expenses of telecom and things of that nature. So I guess my question is twofold, you know. Is telecom going to get to the point that it's not cost-effective for us to do? And second, are our other rates going to remain low? And I say that as I know that there was just a small rate increase, but that's, you know, that's typical, that happens over time. But are we going to remain competitive with the surrounding counties?
So what I can speak to is the here and now. I don't know the status of the infrastructure in Bardstown versus how you have maintained here in Frankfurt. What I can say about the Frankfurt Plant Board is that, yes, they are, and they do feel confident in their numbers and their volume and percent of the market share is that they can remain competitive in this line. What will the future look like? They've kept up for you. Now, again, as a customer, we always want bigger, better, faster, right? Nothing's fast enough, but they have kept up and in pace when you had the need for, when it was cable. They brought you basic cable. So there is nothing indicating at this point, and again, with their bond rating, with their audits, they're financially sound and solvent, there is nothing that's indicating that it's a red flag. It has been more under the tone of, "Sell it while you've got it, and it's worth something, and you can get a check." So I can't really speak to Bardstown, don't represent them, haven't looked at their assets in books. But you, if it's proper, can I buy the plus one?
Sure, please. We'd love to hear it.
But we do, we do have the ability, and we do think we can remain competitive, at least here.
Thank you for the question. I certainly can't speak for the challenges that Bardstown has on their utility side. I know that for our internet, we have not raised rates in 10 years, while we've increased speeds 2.5X across the board, and our budget over the next five years does not budget any rate increases as we continue to build out our fiber services, so.
And it's my understanding that with regard to cable, there's already new technology that you all are testing at this point, and with fiber, you're even looking at 5X-ing or maybe even at some point 10X-ing speeds around here.
Yeah, our network is capable of 10 gig, you know, so it's future-proof. And right now, our fastest speed that we offer is a gig, but, you know.
Do you remember when we were going to be the first gig city in Kentucky? Going to be the first 10-gig city in Kentucky?
Can we do that now, 10-gig?
Well, you're, it's only capable, yeah. I hope that answers.
It does, it does. And I have plenty of people that come to me and say, "Well, is it a good deal, is it a bad deal, is it a deal?" And the question becomes really down to dollars and cents. What's my, what's my rates, what are my rates going to look like? You know, a year from now, two years from now? And obviously, the Plant Board has done right by the folks of Frankfurt for years and years. In fact, your fiber rates were actually lower than when they started installing. Does the Plant Board have plans to expand services to inside-city limit areas for fiber technology?
So the plan is to, every customer who receives telecommunications services today via COAX will receive it via fiber. That is in the plan, that's going to happen. We will continue to build out, there are some areas in the county that are in the plan, and I know that there's additional funding that we've been talking about that will continue out in the county, but certainly, everybody that is our customer today that has access to it will have access to fiber. We're not picking and choosing winners or losers, as far as that goes.
Okay.
And I think an important follow-up is, despite, kind of to the comments that you heard, that you all owning a broadband municipal utility service has not impeded competition. You have seven other competitors already in your market, and that's good for your constituents and ratepayers. The more competition you have, it drives and helps keep rates low, but keeps innovation going, right? going, right? Because they want to continue to compete. So it's had a positive effect, I think it will, but to your point, I hope I answered everything. Can't speak to Bardstown, but thank you for the question, sir.
I'd like to, Commissioner Thompson, in terms of our rates, we've actually got two areas of business. There's the cable business, and as Harvey can talk to, our charge per customer, our administrative cost of running the cable system has not changed what Harvey, ten, twelve years?
I think it's, yeah, it's more like fifteen or fifteen.
Fifteen, that's the same rate. When you mentioned the rate increases you see are purely pass-throughs, there's two areas we pass through. One, federal law requires that when we take the free signals for Lexington Louisville Broadcast TV out of the air, which is free, under federal law, we have to reimburse those channels, and it is a lot of money. By law, we're not allowed to disclose only the total amount, we can't say how much it goes to each network, each station, but it's a lot of money. We're in the midst of negotiating that, which you just mentioned, right now, and they basically say this is the price. As a policy, we have always maintained, you know, most of our viewers, our number one channel is Fox. Most of our viewership watches Lexington TV, but we've always tried to keep the Louisville channels for weather purposes, so that when the weather comes, you can see it on their radar coming here. That's a pass-through. Then the other is, we belong to a, a national organization that represents hundreds of cable companies, that we negotiate ESPN, Disney, all those channels. They negotiate, you've seen before, stations going dark. They basically say, "This is what we want. If you don't pay it, they turn you off." We try to weigh that, and it's not just, you can't just say, "We want ESPN." It may be you, you want ESPN, but you've got to take these other five channels or you don't get ESPN. That's just the nature of the business, not just with us, but with any cable provider. And the other thing to assure you, Commissioner Thompson, is when we do projections on broadband, we assume two things, the cost of establishing the service, and we look at the take rate. Take rate in, none of the grant money we're using in the county is being used in the city, and city cable customers are not financing any part of the county expansion. That's separate. But what we do is, if we're expanding in Indian Hills or in Silver Lake or in Terre Linda, that's one take rate, that's one cost. If we're in the county where we're a mile between each house, that's another take rate. Our recent experience, we've talked publicly about it, when we did Shadrack Ferry, ninety percent of the people said, "We want it." We assigned the letter in writing, the sheriff and a magistrate went out door-to-door, they said, "We want it." Ninety percent. We got ready to hook it up, fifty percent. What that means is, now if you only have fifty percent, your revenue going forward, and what we do is, we use the cost of construction, we take the cost of the revenue, and we use the revenue for future expansions. Bottom line is, you can see in our audits, you can see in our budget that we publish, you can see the revenues all the way down, and we basically are internally financing ourself rather than going to the bond market. We're internally financing the cable expansion, so there's no, there's no bond issuance cost, no bond attorney fees, none of those costs. We're actually using that, and that money is being paid back to the electric department with interest. So the electric customers are not subsidized in the cable, but in fact, that's being paid back, but at a cheaper cost of borrowing than if we went to the commercial market.
And, and that's, I know, I know the answer to this. That's fully legal and allowed.
Yes, yes.
It's like I worked alone, a, a portion of my business finances to another.
Yeah, we, and we basically, all that's detailed in our audit, the repayment schedules, all the payments, all that is set forth in the audit, it's all laid out there, and then when we adopt the budget, we go through those, and as Harvey mentioned, we do a five-year plan, so you can look at the projected cable revenue for the next five years, the revenue, the take rate, and basically, we don't expand if we can't afford it.
Well, and, and the other thing that I think people see, and, and last time Kathy was here, she mentioned, go, go on our website, look at our budgets, and you can see all that. People see, well, gosh, they, they have an eight million dollar, a ten million dollar, but you have to have that in reserves because you have to, you have to keep up with.
Well, and we do two things, when they talk about reserves and what we're doing with the surplus, all the cash, as a utility, at a minimum, it's recommended that we maintain at least three months' reserves. For example, when we, in the midst of COVID, when the governor signed the executive order we couldn't cut off, we took three million dollars of bad debt in two months. A lot of utilities would have had to gone to the bank and borrowed money. We use that with reserves. It took several years, but we recovered most of that. When we had the windstorm earlier last year, we took five hundred thousand dollars damage over a weekend.
March third.
Hopefully, we'll get FEMA money for it. We haven't got to yet, but hopefully, we'll get it, but we basically had the cash to fund it. The other thing is, the way we fund construction costs is if we have a project funded this year, capital construction, and it's funded to get done, and it doesn't get done, then we book that cash into the next fiscal year, because those costs are still coming. It just hadn't been completed yet. So the cash is still there. It's not, it may look like cash, but it's obligated for a project that's already been let, that's already underway, and it has to be paid for.
You're telling me you set aside money and then you do the project with the money that you have to be able to do that?
Yes, sir.
That's way too much common sense. I don't know what's going on.
But we, I mean, the last debt we have right now is on the head-end building up at Tanglewood. All of our other debt, admin building, all of our facilities, everything else is paid off. That's the only interest we have, so. But I just wanted to answer that question about rates. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you, Plant Board. Anybody else? If not?
Thank you.
Again, thank you all so much. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Nice to meet you.